Thank you for joining us in person and those who have joined us online. We are going to resume the October ninth meeting of Lake Forest Fortification, which will be these five degrees. Gledge allegiance and then it was no south. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, one home, universal, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you, Stephen. Item two point three on our agenda is our local of board members. Uh, Mrs. Rash. Dr. Wyatt.
President.
Mr. McCloskey.
Here.
Vice President Sarty.
Here.
And James Ralph serving as Chair is present. We have all five board members present. Item two point four, the uh, approval of the agenda.
The motion we approve the agenda as presented. Second?
The motion and second on the floor to approve the agenda for this evening. Any questions on the motion? During non-alcohol for our vote, all those in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries five zero.
If you can flag for a little minutes, make a motion, we approve the minutes from the September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Lake Forest Board of Education. Second?
The motion and the second on the floor to approve the meeting minutes from the September twenty fifth board meeting. Any questions on that motion? During non-alcohol for our vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the chair abstains, the motion passes four zero with one abstention. Two point six, we do not have any recognitions or presentations this evening. Turning to two point seven citizens' participation, I will be directly from. Board policy KE public concerns and complaints, the citizens' participation item on the board agenda is an opportunity for members of the community to speak publicly. Those who wish to speak publicly with the board must complete the information form provided at the board meeting and submit to the board secretary prior to the opening of the meeting. The form should clearly state the reason for addressing the board. The public should not expect discussion or responses at this board meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. In addition to that, we've also placed online uh, consistent with the new legislation, there is a a box we fill out um, an application to speak tonight as well. Um, as mentioned previously, in the pop process of updating our policy, which will be compliant with the new legislation and that should be done here soon. Hopefully first reading is that on next week or that November?
Next week, next week, yes, next uh, next meeting.
Do we have anyone on honor in person? We do not. So that will conclude this evening's call the comment period. For tonight, I will open the floor for citizens' participation again near the start of our next board meeting. All right, we will now turn to the section through reports. First one is three point one financial reports, Mr. Kirk.
Good evening. We have the uh, monthly board financial report as of the end of September, so we're a quarter of the way into the fiscal year. Uh, starting off with the revenue side of the report, the only change we have in the state side funds is the minor capital improvement. We did receive our enhanced minor capital improvement funds. And so that's the the only change that you see in that top block there. Uh, we got the first of our larger tax deposits there that's showing up there. The next one will be, I should get an email in the next week there. Uh, or so uh, indicating what our largest tax deposit of the year is going to be that ends up getting deposited right around October thirty first. So, um, and then we still have not received our federal funds, although we just did get approval from DOE for our consolidated grants, so that should be coming over within the next week, I would estimate. So we've received uh, forty eight percent of our discretionary funds compared to fifty percent last year and sixty eight percent of all funds compared to sixty six percent last year. Any questions on the revenue side?
Any questions for Mr. Calvin on revenue?
Uh, moving on to the expenditure side, uh, I'm going to start with the punchline first, which is basically. Um, we have on the discretionary side seventy percent of the budget remaining and that's compared to seventy seven percent last year. And so that is a number that makes the hair stand up on the back of my neck and kind of make me look further and investigate, why are we off by seven percentage points from last year? And so looking at last year's board financial report from the end of September. Um, five of those percent of seven percentage points was due entirely to the amount of money that we encumbered on purchase orders. So what you see in the bottom of that um, under encumbered amount for the total discretionary, which shows one point one seven nine million. Um, that was like in the two hundred thousand last year. And so that just goes to show that we put a lot more money upfront on purchase orders this year. Um, whether it's the Kelly Services substitute contract that we hadn't put on at this time last year. And so there's really having investigated further, there's really nothing to be too alarmed about. This is, this is kind of common there this time of the year. They're just kind of getting ahead of the game and putting a lot of this on purchase orders out front. The other two percent is.
So nothing unexpected, just timing.
Yeah, exactly. And so the other two percent is really just, I mean, you could attribute it to the two percent increase in our local salaries, so. Um, um, but overall, not too concerned there. Uh, but again, seventy percent remaining compared to seventy seven percent last year. Now, all funds seventy seven percent remaining compared to eighty one percent last year. Same thing when I look at the encumbered funds. We're over twice what we were last year. So just a little bit of a timing thing. So any questions on the expenditure report?
Any questions for Mr. Kelvin on it?
Okay, thank you, sir. Turning to item three point two, our superintendent report of boots. What do you mean, everybody? Always like to start by reporting good news and there's always plenty of good news in Lake Forest. First, I want to thank and congratulate all of the schools for their participation in Spirit Week. Uh, it's great to see homecoming being celebrated across all the schools in the district. Still have two more days left in our parade. It'll step off at six P M tomorrow evening in Felton and the football game at eleven A M Saturday morning in the stadiums. The homecoming dance is Saturday night at Lake Forest High School. Thank you to many staff and community members who are making this week possible and I wish everyone a safe and enjoyable homecoming weekend. Next, October is National School Principal Month. So I'm going to send thanks and congratulations to all our school principals and assistant principals. School principals and assistant principals make up a tiny fraction of our district employees, but they are entrusted with a wide range of limitless duties, enormous responsibility, and they serve long arduous days and many nights. Can't say enough about the great work uh, that our building administrators do and along with me, I ask everyone to thank them for their great service to Lake Forest. I always like to give a few reminders, so here goes. Hopefully everyone will be able to ac- have was able to access their uh, progress reports last week as the first marking period interim date was uh, October second. If you were not able to access that report or you have concerns about the marks, please reach out to your student's teacher, school counselor, administrator, or administrator as soon as possible. We're still early in the year and want to be sure to get ahead of any concerns. The end of the first marking period is right around the corner, November third. That is really rapidly approaching um, quickly. And of course, uh, just a reminder, there's no schools for students tomorrow, October tenth, as statewide professional learning day. Tons of great events going on in October, book fairs, literacy nights, PTO, BTA meetings. The annual Battle of the Bell next Friday night in Milford. And um, Lake Forest will be again hosting haunted hallways on October thirty first, so make plans to be there. As always, you can find the district calendar on our district website under quick links, so I encourage you to check that out. And that's all I have this evening. I wheel the floor back to President Ralph and the board for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Any questions for him, Todd Lucas? I'm Mr. Stone.
Any positive negative feedback about around in the news format of our report cards and.
I've got no negative feedback and then the um, uh, I checked most of the staff numbers, so I'm sure we're in the district. They especially liked the um, detail with the gap from the with the immune system. So uh, it's anecdotally, we've gotten just generally positive and even negative feedback.
And only even from the campus stuff worked well, yes?
Uh, well, thanks to, thanks to really a lot of physical labor by people like Miss Bulcheck, Ms. Dawson, Mr. Weller. Um, I mean, there's a, I, I'm sorry, I started Mr. Uh, Mr. Levin, his team. Uh, it's re- it's taken a lot. Uh, it's, it's not, it wasn't, it wasn't a very automated and user friendly kind of transition, but um, a lot of hard work and I think we're, I don't know, just loving we turn the corner or what do you think?
I think so and just maybe if you kind of, I think once we get through um, unit count, that is. We'll see, but yeah, it's, it's much smoother now than it was before we said, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's like any news, any other news system, you really don't know until you go to look for something and then you're like, this is somewhere else, but uh, kudos to the many great folks who've been doing work. With some long days on your summer, getting that, making that transition work.
So it's not negative news, it's going well, we don't care about. We certainly would know if it wasn't.
Any other question for Dr. Lewis? Thank you, sir. You can, we will now turn to item three point three in our report section, uh, CNN support, the premises, uh, on con.
Hi, thank you for having me today, um, board, Dr. Lucas, and a huge crowd in the back. Um, this is my annual, you know, catch up with you and let you know what's going on in child nutrition. So um, a lot of you that have been here in the past uh, know some of these slides, but I kept them in there for uh, Mrs. Rash so that she would get uh, same information. So we'll go through the department structure, funding sources, programs and events, participation and community eligibility provision. So this is our first slide with our, our department structure. So you have a picture of each of our kitchens there. We have six kitchens, of course. And one satellite location that's south sends food to which is deck. So um, we have forty one employees, each school has a manager, two cook bakers and general workers to fill in the rest and of course, uh, student body and meals per labor hour is how we get our size for our staff. So the next slide kind of explains our funding sources. Um, the Food Nutrition Service of the USDA administers a program at the federal, federal level. Then Department of Education Nutrition Department monitors and supports us from the state level. And then um, we work with, they work with each school food authority, each district to operate the various programs. So the funding is uh, federal for reimbursements and grants, um, state uh, supports our labor. And then some other income comes from à la carte and catering events. So our main programs, the school nutrition program, and that's our breakfasts and lunches. Uh, we, we receive cash subsidies and USDA food and reimbursements through there. Our reimbursement rates are based on the percentage of students determined to um, qualify for free and reduced meals versus those who get a paid meal. So who's eligible for the free reduced meals? They uh, you know, they participate in the federal assistant programs like SNAP and uh, TANF. Or they're on our homeless migrant runaway or foster children list. And then you'll see below there um, our SFSP, which is our summer program, CACFP, which is our after school program. We'll get into those a little bit in the next couple of slides. Like this one. So some of our programs I wanted to highlight, um, our summer and after school programs. Uh, summer, of course, we're trying to bridge the gap between the school years to reach our community, to feed our children some uh, breakfasts and lunches throughout the summer. Um, we got some uh, big numbers this year and we'll get into that on a future slide, but there is a small picture down in the corner there. Uh, we had distribution again, just like in the COVID year, years, and um, so we had a lot of uh, participation in that program this year. Um, after school program, child and adult care food program. Uh, that's covers our after school snacks, girls on the run, um, drama club, tutoring, anything that happens after school hours, we provide some snacks for those students. And we're trying to get into uh, athletics even more. Uh, uh, something that is not mentioned on here, but I thought was important was our fresh fruits and vegetable program, which is a grant program that we apply for every year for our elementary schools. And that provides um, fruits and vegetables for them to sample in the classroom with educational uh, component to it. And um, we hope to influence them, expose them to new and different healthier choices that they can hopefully carry through. So um, for the fresh fruits and vegetables, those are based on the school's enrollment and availability of funding. So um, something that's fairly new is uh, collabora- collaboration with life skills. Um, so students working with our cafeterias. Um, I'm going to focus on Chipman, uh, that seems to be one of our bigger programs in the district. So life skills and cafeteria, there's a picture at right in the middle on the right hand side, you see Roxanne, some of the students and uh, Roxanne's group there at Chipman. Uh, so they are doing everything from folding laundry, bagging cookies. Uh, they're breaking down boxes, they're helping count um, the breakfast carts as they come back for inventory. So they are growing in work ethic, in teamwork and leadership skills, uh, really coming out of their shells, a lot of them. Um, so we're very excited about that. Uh, Roxanne says she, she feels like she receives just as much, if not more than the students do. Um, it's really dear to her heart. She loves, she loves doing this. Um, last one that I was going to talk about, well, close to last, uh, farm to school. So this is something we keep trying to get involved with and especially being down here. Uh, we really want to reach out to our local farmers and be a part of the community that way. So um, one of the ones we've been talking about last couple of years is going to our state fair and auction for beef. So um, I think we all remember a couple of years ago when we bought our first one. Does anybody remember his name? Jack, yes. So Jack was our first cow. Um, we went to the national conference that year, a week before the state fair. Found out that we could do this and came back and with the help of Shelley Simpson. Um, we were able to jump right in and start betting on our cows and she's been helping us ever since. So first year we got one, last year we got two, this year we got four. So um, we did have some concerned community members that got ahold of Dr. Wyatt and I'm not sure who else and myself. Worried about, you know, they hear that we're spending twenty thousand dollars on some cows. They want to know, uh, is this referendum money that they're we're spending on cows? Are the children going to get these? Uh, get, you know, to actually have this as part of their lunch and uh, absolutely yes. And again, you know, our money is not from the referendum, so uh, I tried to spread that word and hopefully uh, this will help that. So um, we the reason why we did it, I kind of went over, uh, they're less processed. I mean, this has got to be healthier than just about anything we can get from, you know, most vendors and stores. The price was actually competitive even with getting it processed. It ended up being cheaper than a lot of places where we, we get the meat. And you know, again, we're, we're supporting local farmers, especially some of the FFA students. So we're very excited about that. Um, a new one that we've participated in, and you'll see that picture right in the middle, you might recognize somebody there. Um, this is Amber Rash and her daughter, what's her name? Amelia, uh, appropriately dressed in her watermelon shirt for Watermelon Wednesday last week. Um, we had Marble Farms donate too many watermelons. Um, so we were able to have enough at every school to sample those with the students and give them away as an extra little treat. So um, Dr. Wyatt and Ms. Rash came out to South and visited us during that, along with Dave and his sister Anne from Marble Farms. So that was a fun little way to get out and see the kids. So um, on a smaller note, you know, real quick, I didn't want to say that we are trying to pay it forward with other dietetic interns. Um, and we do have them come in. We try to do it every year, at least one intern a year. So that's most of our programs, events. And um, next week, we are celebrating National School Lunch Week. And this year we are doing Taste the World, so we're trying to get some different ethnic dishes out there. We usually have um, coloring contests for the kids and they can, you know, get their artwork put up and voted on and maybe win some prizes of à la carte items, that sort of thing. Um, another one coming up this month, month is a bocce ball tournament. And that's with our Special Olympics here at the high school where we serve snacks, we serve lunch for the kids outside in the field. And we um, put a little extra uh, special treat out there with some hot cocoa and hot apple cider and we have fun celebrating out there with them. Um, celebrity server is something that we have. I have one picture down there, Ms. Parker at East helping us serve up some Thanksgiving. Uh, she's decked out in her hairnet and gloves there. So we invite teachers, we send out a little spreadsheet, have everyone sign up, we welcome them to our next, if you will. Uh, we do this for our Thanksgiving meal and Christmas meal. We might um, do something special around Easter slash spring break. So we'll be hearing more about that. Um, for the last three years, we've uh, collaborated with Harrington McDonald's to do pie day at the high school and I've never seen them smile so much over there. But when they come in and get uh, McDonald's hot apple pies, they're very happy and we do that every year on pie day, March fourteenth. So they've donated at least six hundred pies every year. Very excited about that. I love Lake Forest Day. We uh, enjoy bringing our van out and parking right at the entrance, so we get to say hi to everybody as they're coming in. And um, we have our spinning wheel there when people weigh some prizes to the kids. Uh, sell some food and just say hello to everybody. And thank God for good weather on that day. Um, and tomorrow, uh, we're, we're doing our second year in the homecoming parade. This time we're going to attempt to have a float in it as well. So uh, I hope to be contending for that prize. So the next slide is my favorite. Um, this is our participation, well, that's very small. But um, the first one, the smallest section over to the right is our after school snacks for the last three school years. Um, then we have our summer program. And then with the blue background is our regular school nutrition program. So I'd just like to see that the last bar is the tallest and that means we're doing something right. So I'm uh, happy about that. So uh, the snack program, we've increased from uh, twenty two, twenty three to twenty twenty three, twenty four to twenty four, twenty five by forty four percent. Um, our summer program, because of our boxes and distribution, we shot up a hundred and fifty percent. So we've really um, just skyrocketed on that one with seventeen thousand additional meals. So we capped out at twenty eight thousand meals for the summer program. Uh, S and P, the percentage doesn't sound good, but we are still um, increasing by ten thousand meals last year over the year before. So that's an extra sixty meals a day for those students, for our students. All right, and this last slide, um, community eligibility provision has put us on a roller coaster the last few years, but we're, we're doing very well, I'm happy to say. Um, so this uh, lets us qualify for free breakfast and free lunch for all of our students, so we don't have to do meal applications. And uh, it reduces the stigma, the paperwork, you know, and everything in between. So it's identified through um, a student percentage. And these are the direct certs that we kind of mentioned earlier. And then it used to be that it had to be forty percent. So the numbers up above here, when we started in fifteen, we were good at forty five. Then it got to forty in nineteen, then it started dipping down to twenty three, just in time for them to lower that percentage to twenty five. So you know, we got in by the skin of our teeth there. Um, and now with the way they've changed the way Medicaid is kind of tracked, that's also helped us. So we're, we're getting additional reimbursement and that's bumped us up to forty seven. So we're happy about that and we'll use that extra reimbursement to get some newer equipment to replace some older aging stuff. That is our last slide. If anybody has any questions, we'll be happy to try and answer those.
My question, but just for me, I just would like to thank you for that report. Um, I'm sure there are a lot of people in our community that uh, think of your department and envision it as lunch and sometimes practice for our students and that's it. And clearly that's way more than that. There's a lot of good work that's being done there. So appreciate the effort that you do in your departments.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll turn to the last item, the fourth, three point four, hang on.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Um, so tonight I'm going to do our annual unit count um, presentation. So just an overview of unit count, it's the annual head count that happens at every public school in Delaware. Uh, it takes place every year during the last ten school days in September. So this year that was from September seventeenth till September thirtieth. So it just ended last week. Um, this is how our schools generate their state funding. So every student is um, classified in a funding needs category and that's tied to the calculation of the units that we receive. Um, this year, for the first time, we use Infinite Campus. So the data was um, collected at Infinite Campus and fed into EdFi and then into our unit count application, which is in the data service center. So our units, uh, depending on what category you fall in, um, each of our students falls in, determines how many units are generated. So they're all listed down here, but uh, for example, uh, students in grades four through twelve for our regular education, it takes twenty students to generate one unit. Um, whereas if you look down to our complex special education students, it only takes two point six students to generate a unit. So uh, there are three categories here, basic, intensive and complex. And those are really just based on the level of need that those students have. Um, and obviously, as you see the numbers go down, the more complex students, the more complex their needs, the more uh, that we need more staff for those students. So unit count is um, attendance based. So all schools must validate their attendance of all students during those attendees. Um, essentially, daily classroom attendance is taken by the teachers and then it's validated by the attendance clerks and by the administrators. And um, basically unless there's a reason that we believe during the ten day period that a student's attendance is fleeting or momentary, then if they are here for um, all or part of that window, then they are enrolled into our school for the school year, um, based on that last day of September. So our unit count support team um, includes myself and Mr. Kellerman, as well as Ms. Allman and Mr. Levin and our visiting teacher, Dr. Jones. So our allocation of the units after unit count wraps up, we go through and we uh, work on allocating the units that were earned to each of the schools. Um, so essentially our goal is to um, uh, house each school with ninety eight percent of their units. So I'll come back to the waiver portion in a minute. This is the spreadsheet that Mr. Kellerman and I work on, um, that starts over here on the left. You can see our enrollment per school. Uh, we added, this comes from our unit count application and data service center. And we actually add a column down here for high roads. So we pull out our high road students, uh, because we cash those units in separately. So we had one student from east, one from north and six from Chipman that come down here to account for the eight students in the high roads classrooms that are at North and Chipman. Um, if you move over to the right a little bit more, you can see our categories here for basic, intensive and complex. And that is essentially how many units were generated for each of those schools based on the needs category that were identified for each student. Our vocab is only for middle and high school. That's our CTE programs and how we generate units for those. And uh, we come over here to this blue column, which is our total earned. And what we do is uh, we give ninety eight, our goal is to give ninety eight percent of the regular and basic to the schools and a hundred percent of the units earned for pre-K intensive or complex. So the next step is we look at how we are staffed as of that day, as of September thirtieth, um, when we end and look at the difference, which comes over here to the entitlement. Um, so we have over here how many we would allocate and this column is essentially where it says release post nine thirty, that's our next step. So the next step would be to look at what we have generated, look at the percentages and meet with the schools to determine what their needs are and how they could possibly use additional units. Um, and so this column over here, the percent of entitlement, this is if we were to get to the ninety eight percent. Um, you can see that most of our elementary schools are staffed, or all of our elementary schools are staffed at one hundred percent. North is sitting at a hundred ten percent right now because they did lose some units this year. Um, it was really from uh, a decrease in special education students, not necessarily enrollment. Uh, they had quite a few third graders in the intensive and complex categories who moved on to central. So when those students moved on from north, their total units went down based on that funding. Um, so when that happens, of course, you can see our Chipman and the high school are not um, they're not at one hundred percent of the ninety eight percent. Uh, but right now what we are working on is looking at, um, we have about two point nine two units that we can uh, give back to them. So we'll be meeting with them to talk about and discuss the possibility of using those units and um, what we could possibly staff there to help get closer to that ninety eight percent. And so the waiver, uh, we would have to apply for that by December first, so that if we would need to go to the ninety eight percent waiver, we would come back to the, one of the board meetings in November, um, to request that. As of right now, it looks like there is possibly a need just because we see that north is overstaffed and so that could create some issues with getting all the way to the ninety eight percent, even if we get close for the secondary schools. And we also look at K to three class sizes. Um, and so for uh, kindergarten through grades three, um, we are not supposed to exceed twenty two students and that is as of the last day of October. And that is as of the last day of October. So right now, we generated through Infinite Campus, the rosters for the homerooms for each of the three K, three K3 schools. And we only have one school right now that is over, that is East. Their third grade, all four of their third grade classrooms are over that ratio at this time. They have three classes at 24 and one class at 23. All of the other schools right now are technically at zero, but I did make a note that at South, right now, they have three kindergarten classes at 22 and one first grade class at 22. So that's something that we'll certainly keep an eye on as we move forward with that. Because again, that waiver would be due December 1st. So we will come back to the November board meeting to request that waiver, which we know at this time, we will need to because of the class sizes for third grade at East. Any questions on unit count first?
Any questions for Dr. Lucas on that?
It will, but not until November. Thank you.
Turning to the second to approve resolution 7.1 as written. Any questions? The motion is second to approve resolution 7.1 as written. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, 5-0.
Section 8 personnel make a motion to approve resolution 8.1 as presented.
The motion and a second on the floor to approve the personnel report for this evening. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, 5-0.
Section 10 of the business and make a motion to approve resolution 10.1 school choice as presented. Second.
The motion and a second on the floor to approve resolution 10.1 school choice. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, 5-0.
Action for other business financial report of the motion to approve resolution 12.1 as presented.
The motion and a second on the floor to approve resolution 12.1, the financial report for this evening. Questions on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, 5-0. Including Mrs. Starky and Mrs. Kostky. Section 14, board reports discussion items, 14.1 Delaware School Board decision.
Hi, next meeting.
No meeting. Any questions for Mrs. Starky, want to get SPG? 14.2 legislation committee, Dr. Wyatt.
Hi, a couple of things. We met on October 1st. And some of the things that have now been signed into the air, background checks have been expanded a little bit for anyone who works in the school systems. There were some cracks where people who really should not have been allowed to get into the school system. And so part of the legislation was to make sure that that did not happen. So some of the employment agencies didn't do the full rigor of checking. So that's been taken care of. Another piece of legislation that we looked at was, that passed, was our school constables. Sometimes, depending on where the school is, they may have to step out into the road to direct traffic. And they were not covered under the existing contract. So they've now extended that to make sure that they were covered. With our Harrington schools, it was covered by the officer from Harrington. But just in case a constable had to do it, they would be covered. And then the other piece that I thought was notable was any disruptions on school buses. This piece also passed where if there is some kind of interference with the school bus and or refusing to obey the orders of the school bus driver, that student could be charged with disorderly conduct. And that did pass and was signed by the government.
I believe, Dr. Wyatt, that that does not cover students. It does cover non-students.
Non-students. It's people who've come onto the bus for whatever reason. Yes. That's all.
Any questions for Dr. Wyatt, the, I'm sure, the DSP. Do you guys want to just the group meeting, like, between?
February 4th.
Okay. Is there anyone, we can get all board members, do you guys all get the email from them when they send the minutes out?
No, no.
Could we just, I just forward them to Caroline, have her post the minutes with the committee report? That way, anyone that does want to see the minutes, that's what I need to do when I was, when I was here.
Okay.
I thought that they were sending all of them, so. All right, thank you. Turn to 14.3, go to the order. This is not for any board member to raise a question or concern that was not covered by any other agenda item. Does anyone have anything for going anywhere? Right? Be some Eagles fan up at this table. Turning.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a need for any board member or Dr. Lucas to enter executive session? Uh, no, sir. It's not. So hearing that, I will now entertain a moment, a moment, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn for evening. Any questions on that motion? Before I call for a vote, I will thank, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Safe travels home. Not an Eagle fan, but I will say go Phillies, they're playing right now, and go Flyers. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, 5-0. Getting some dirty looks from my Eagle fan comrades. Go Eagles. There we go. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is October 23rd, right here, Eagles group. Thank you for attending. Have a great night.